Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, August 26, 2021. Time is now 7:01 PM. First item on the agenda, public hearing continued. Pine, Sand and Stone Company, applications for an earth removal special permit, water resource protection overlay district special permit. 62 Manchog Street, possible votes. So, we have a request for continuance to 9:23. Do you want to... Is the applicant here to say anything?
No.
No?
I'm here.
He's just here to...
I thought that you were gonna not...
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we're continuing.
Yeah.
Okay. And there is someone in the audience with one...
We are. Representative 27 and 33, Grove Street.
We are continuing. So you'll have to... Do you have something in your hand or...
I do. I have a letter of grievance towards it. We're pretty much sick of this continuing and continuing. We want to know if it's going to go forward. Again, there was a big debacle across the street with the conservation and I don't know who was looking over that, but we don't want that happening in our backyards. And this project is moving a lot of dirt and clearing a whole area where it was not cleared before. So if there's going to be another debacle of what happened across the street that flooded three people's homes, we don't want it there.
Okay. So name and address for the record first.
My name is Michael White. I own 27 Grove Street. And my neighbor, Michelle Willis, is 33 Grove and she was not able to make it tonight. So she wrote a letter to you guys at the board.
We'll take the letter. We're gonna continue because the applicant requested continuance. And as far as conservation, they are on conservation for the next meeting, September 13th. So we are meeting in the same meeting room.
Okay.
So you can bring up any concerns then. But I will, if the board would like, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
So moved.
To 9:23 at 7:00 PM. Motion made by Mike Z., seconded by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any of us?
Still on the first item line.
Okay. So we'll see you... We continue to September 23rd and then conservation is September 13th. And if you wanted to send any other documentation in before the meeting, you can submit that through the community development. Next item is going to be request for an extension, Bella Woods, 202, 206 Maple Street, possible votes.
Okay. So that's something that needs new business?
Discussion.
Yep.
So we have a letter in our packet, Bella Woods Residential Compound.
Yep.
Extension for the road work at Bella Drive to September 25, 2022 because of delays due to COVID-19. I think they have an automatic tolling, but any comments on that?
I don't have any.
There's somebody in the audience that wants...
No, that's for Cooperstown.
Yeah. At 7:30.
Yep.
Anyone on the... On the line for Bella Woods Residential? No.
No.
So I would entertain a motion to continue the... I mean, to extend the permit to September 25, 2022.
I'll make a motion to extend the...
You want to hear from the person in the audience?
They're for a different project.
We're on discussion item number one for Bella Woods, that residential compound.
They're here on below.
Those votes are for here.
Yeah, Cooperstown, right?
We're here.
Oh, you jumped down over it.
Well, we have...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. My apologies. Okay.
That's okay.
I made the same mistake.
Are you sure you don't want to talk about this one?
You don't want to talk about Bella? No. All right.
So, okay. I'll make a motion to extend their permit for Bella Woods Residential Compound to September 25, 2022.
Okay. Motion made by Les.
Second.
Second by Jake. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll send that out. I believe there's an automatic tolling anyway. So all of the time during state of emergency should have been added on to if they're expiring September 25, 2021, it should have automatically been extended. So all the tolling days need to be added to the last day of the expiration of that permit for every permit and it's automatic.
What is the official expiration date of that? That was when the governor lifted up?
Oh, it's June 15.
June 15.
So we were in state of emergency for a lot of months.
Till the governor lifted up state of emergency.
Yeah. But this, I'm assuming this permit was till September 25 of this year.
Quite a few months.
White and Reservoir Estates Request for Release of Lots 4, 6 and 7. Is Bob Pace with us today?
Jude was coming.
Is Jude with us today?
Is he the bottom?
He's right there.
The bottom guy.
But I see Jude.
I'm here.
Here we go. Go on Jude.
Jude, so we're on White and Reservoir Estates, the request for release of lots 4, 6 and 7?
Yes. My understanding is that you guys have released foundation releases so that he can construct the foundations and he's out of town and he asked me to come to the meeting tonight to request, to give you an update if you wish on the site and to request full releases on those lots.
Do we have...
I don't know what the... Go ahead.
Do we have on file the report, the engineer's report for status update? So we had requested probably the last three, four meetings to get something in writing per the conditions of the permit on file from his engineer.
One was number one extended.
Yeah, I know.
He did not ask me to do that.
Okay. Do you have the decision handy?
Not in front of the adults.
Okay. I believe the decision requires status updates per the request of the board for the road work and the conditions and the progress. So the last two meetings he was here, we requested that. He did provide us personally with one, but we're looking for more reports and I know we're kind of on the downslope with this project, but we're still looking for something for the file. Documentation on the status and the condition of the progress and all that.
I can certainly do that. I walked the entire site the other day or limped around the entire site the other day. So I can definitely provide you that report.
Okay. So board, do we have questions for him? So they're now asking those foundation permits, they're asking for full building permits for 4, 6 and 7.
Foundations in, completely inspected and backfilled?
I would ask...
And they can't backfill until they get the first deck.
I would ask Jude.
Jude, are those foundations on those said lots, are they completely in and are they... What's the status of them?
The status is that the three lots are starting to bring in fill to start to shape the lots. They have not put in footings nor have they put in foundations.
Having finished those foundations and then come back, I mean, that's sort of what...
99.
Yeah.
So for 99, could we have the foundations installed and a status report on file?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see... What would be... Would there be any rush to giving full permits for 4, 6 and 7 at this moment? Okay.
I don't know. I don't think so either. I'm catching on to what's needed and what needs to happen before you release the full...
It could be backfilled.
We agreed to the foundations and stopped... Let's see if the foundations in.
Right.
That was the whole intent behind that decision. So I personally will not move forward until the decision was made as met.
We all agree with that.
If that's what you agreed to, I get it and I will relay that to Bob and get you an engineering report and hopefully he can have the foundations in by, you know, the next meeting and I can stand here and tell you that it's done, but right now I cannot.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing Jude, what we said to him at the last time when he's discussing foundations was just to make sure that there's no... That there's barriers around them, just to avoid anybody falling into them. So...
Sorry, say that again?
That there's barriers around the foundations after they're poured and backfilled so nobody accidentally falls into them.
They really can't be backfilled until the deck is on.
It was just stated to the developer that that... He has to follow some safety guidelines. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we'll be ready to act as long as you guys are ready on the 9th.
I will do my best, but as far as the engineering report, I can definitely add that too and I'll push him to get the foundations in, stabilize the site and make it safe.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you Jude.
Thank you.
Next item was that scenic road, 7 Webster Street property. This is 711.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Drive through.
Did you guys already do Cooperstown and accept the continuation?
No.
Okay.
7:30.
I'll hang around. Okay.
Thank you. So these guys are just requesting to continue, to be on, under discussion for the 9th so we don't need any formal vote on that. At least they've responded.
Yeah. So I wrote a cease and desist letter to them to ask them to stop what they were doing and come to the planning board. They have stopped whatever it was they were doing. They did come into the planning office. I was not there, but I think Maria, I don't know if Jen... I know Maria was there and they were playing with the issue of they're just out of town. So they'll come back on the 9th and have a conversation with the board about what they're doing.
And in the meantime, it's been repaired and back. It's report restored back to...
I don't know if it's... I don't know. I think actually she spoke to... They spoke to Ken. I'm not sure if they've put it back, but they've stopped doing whatever it was they were doing.
Yeah. I think there was some sort of restoration that occurred.
Good to know.
So that's good.
But they were happy to come in and they just couldn't come today.
Yeah. So we'll keep that on the agenda for 99. McIntyre Loan 470 Northeast Main Street Phase 4, request for release of restoration bond. Okay. So I think we received some pictures in our email showing restoration. Oh. Okay.
There's some pictures in the back.
Yep.
So it's completely vegetated at this point. I don't believe that anyone from the town has done any site visits. Do we want to have someone, a third party, an engineer to go out or are the pictures How much is the bond? We typically name the amount of the bond in our motion.
Now, it's all the rain this year, it's green.
Yeah.
I think these were done in July too, so, uh, June.
If anyone is worried, no. I was speaking earlier to Bob Minaruk who was going to call them to tell them to come early because they were at the bottom of the agenda, but now we've moved things up.
Oh, they may be heading in?
Maybe they're coming later. I don't know. I don't know that, but it's clear he didn't get in touch with them to come earlier.
Okay. All right. So we'll just pass over this because I believe we do need the amount of the...
So maybe they're gone.
Yep.
For our bullshit, I think that the pictures look great. I don't think that we need to go out to the site or have anyone go out there.
I mean, that's where it used to be. That's where Bill would be able to pick off, go up and take a quick look to confirm everything, you know, in the past.
It looks good.
Pictures are good, but sometimes you have a real eyeball on it.
Yeah. Well, I think that if the request comes in early enough, like you said, July, then we could have just gotten a couple hours of LEI or someone.
Right.
Or even, yeah.
Quick gander, just to make sure.
To verify that's not some field in Ireland or something.
Well, no. I mean, they have a good reputation and stuff, but the idea is having a real eyeball from the town on it to those pictures.
Yeah. So we'll just see if they come in. We do need a number, I'm pretty sure.
Hundred percent.
Right? For the bond release number?
Yep.
Okay.
Be great to know what we have in the account.
Okay. 93 Davis Street requesting clarification on fence versus jersey barriers, extension on final quote on parking lot, possible votes. I'll recuse myself and Jake, if you could take over on the communication for that. I'll just stay at the table.
Can I brush the background?
Sure. Oh, yeah.
There it is.
Yeah, don't talk to me.
So I had an application with Ken Fraser today about this issue. So he had a back and forth with the board that you guys, that you all discussed on June 24th, that he was giving them a CO but had a couple of issues that were not done yet and he was hoping that they would be done by September. The sign, I guess, is a problem because the vendors are all backed up. So it is what it is. But there was some paving issues and some striping on the parking lot and there were jersey barriers that were at the time in place for the drop off in the back. There's a retaining wall and then...
Which we talked about that.
Right. Okay. So on the plans which I have, that you approved, it's a fence.
Correct.
And he has told the owner that they need to put the fence in and they don't want to. Honestly, this isn't something that should be on the agenda just as a conversation between the board and the applicant or the owner of the building. The... If the owner does not want to install what was required by the planning board on the plans, then they need to come in and amend their site, amend their application, amend their special permit and their site plan.
Correct. Did we not... Well, did we not have a conversation? Does board approve the use of the jersey barriers instead of the fence?
No, that's a temporary.
Temporary.
Just temporarily so that they could...
Yeah, because there's a delay of fence.
Now, they're saying they want to keep them.
They want to keep them. They don't want to build the fence and the fence is what is on here and that there's... If you... If the board, I mean, the... So the board approves the plans and then it's up to the building inspector or the building commissioner...
To enforce.
To enforce it. So he needs to make it look like this. There are some cases that he can say it's consistent with what the board wanted and that's okay. In this case, he has not found it to be consistent. There is a fence and there's no fence on the site. So he does not want to give... He will not give them...
I want to speak out on this. We all agreed for a temporary jersey barrier situation because they said that they couldn't get anybody in until September.
Right. Okay.
In my opinion, the fence goes up. Jersey barriers were temporary and we all agreed to have it temporary, not as a permanent deal. That's my opinion.
That is what the... That is what the building commissioner wanted.
And that was the information the building inspector was given, that we gave them a temporary deal so they could move forward, get opened up, do whatever they had to do. And they said they could get the fence company in in September. We all said, okay, we understand, you know, places are busy, this and that, the whole deal. We're coming in September and I think the fence should go up.
Well, I think there was... There's a fence, I think that was on the plan, a fence.
I can show the plan.
I'm familiar with it. There's a fence and then there was a... What do they call it? The school's got it around their parking lot.
There's a chain link fence and there's a wooden... There's supposed to be a chain link fence.
Guard rail. A wooden guard rail.
And a wooden fence.
Yeah, yeah. I thought the fence, yeah, I thought the fence was put in, in the jersey barriers were put in because the guard rail, the folks installing the guard rail were coming out and stuff like that due to the time trying to get the...
One, I think all they have right now is jersey barrier.
Yeah.
They have a jersey... I haven't been out to the site, according to Ken Fraser.
It's just jersey barrier.
There's a chain link fence and a jersey barrier. There's supposed to be a chain link fence and a wooden...
Okay, okay. So there is a chain... There is a chain link fence.
The chain link fence is there, but it's supposed to be a wooden...
Guard rail.
Right.
So did we... Did you just say the chain link fence is in?
Yes. But the issue is...
So we're talking about the guard rail versus the jersey barriers? Is there a reason, is it for aesthetics, if they both physically do the same, that this is a business who's trying to open? You know, we need to also to be, respond and listen to what's in place. But hold on, I just, I wanted to say my piece here. Is that if it is just as effective and it's there and we don't care about the aesthetics and it's in the back and there's a fence behind it, that fence is in per the drawings. We're simply taking, in front of us, we're being asked, can they maintain the jersey barriers or do they need to remove these jersey barriers and put a fence up?
Okay.
I mean, the guard rail.
There are two issues. First of all, the building inspector thinks that it's a safety issue and an aesthetic issue. And it was something that was on the site plan and he does not find it to be consistent. And so he needs to go with what's on the plan.
So the guard rails are stronger and higher than the jersey?
It just...
The second issue is if the... If the planning board, if the applicant wants to keep the jersey barriers there and not install the fence, they have to go back through...
The guard rail.
Modification.
Whatever it's called, not the chain link fence, but the wooden...
The fence is in.
Wooden post and rail is what it's called, I guess. That's what Ken told me.
I know what it is.
Wooden post and rail. If they would like to put it, to keep the jersey barriers for good and not put in the wooden post and rail, they have to do the... Redo the application, amend the...
Just a modification.
Modification.
It's a... Well, it's a modification of their site plan and their special permit, so they have to do the whole process.
No, not the whole process.
It's a minor modification.
They can come in for an 81W or whatever it is.
But it has to be, doesn't it?
It's not the whole process all over again.
But it does not have to be advertised?
No. No, it does not have to be advertised.
It has to be on the agenda.
It has to be on the agenda, not under discussion. It has to be on the agenda as an item.
So it's on the agenda tonight, but...
No. It has to be on the agenda.
As a modification, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Two different scenarios.
That's fine. So it's not correctly on the agenda tonight.
It's under discussion.
It's under discussion. We're having this discussion.
Is it additional business or discussion? That's the same thing?
Yes.
Additional business versus something?
So the processes, I've... The process is not correct for them to get the change tonight.
Correct.
The building commissioner believes that it's an aesthetic and a safety issue and so he would like the fence to be built.
Well, guard rail.
Guard rail, whatever. Wooden post and rail is what he called it. He would like it to be built and they have a temporary CO or even they have a CO with these conditions, which would allow them to open if they could. I believe the... One of the reasons they're not open is because they have to have another walk through with the cannabis control commission, which has nothing to do with this fence.
Yep.
Right.
So we're not holding them up.
So you're not holding them up. To answer your question, you are not... This jersey barrier versus guard rail is not holding them up from opening.
Okay. And you know, but should we ask the applicant or is this fine? You know that, it's not holding them up.
You can ask the applicant. That's what I was told today. I know nothing about this other than what Ken told me.
I mean, I don't go bad in my firm belief. We agreed to a plan. We agreed to a correct plan and the whole nine yards. We've been going yin and yang on this one, I don't know how long. The guard rail, whatever you want to call it, is on the plan. We gave them the wave to allow things to move forward and everything else. They agreed to do that when we said, go ahead, put in the jerseys for now. I think it should go up, the guard rail. The way it's on the plan.
Well, they can come in and request.
They can request anything they want.
Right.
I'm just saying.
That's fair. So we can give them an opportunity to request it.
Yeah. I mean, it's a public forum.
81W is for subdivision plan.
Yeah, but I know what our new...
Yeah, there's something, another 80. We can still do a modification on a plan rather than going through the whole process.
But it was... This is my question. It was a special permit and the special permit relates to the site plan. So in other communities that I've worked in, if you do anything that changes the site plan, whether it's a by right or not, you have to actually go through the special permit process again to amend the site plan that was attached to the special permit.
You can do what's called a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment or modification and Jay...
Does that require a public hearing and the like?
Nope.
It shouldn't.
Nope. It has to be...
Okay. I want to check before...
Yeah.
I mean, we can't do it tonight anyway, but I want to check with town council because...
Talman used to...
Because it was a... It's not just a site plan review, it's a special permit and I want to make sure that... Because I did read the special permit decision and they changed, they got, my understanding is, and you guys were there and I wasn't, but that they got a special permit and a site plan approval and then they changed the building. And so they had to go through the whole process all over again. Or they had to have, they had to, they didn't have to go through the whole process maybe, but they had to re-advertise.
Ah, no. No. That's...
That is what was on the special permit that I read today, that was re-advertised.
Okay. You can ask council.
So I will ask council.
If that's what you want to do.
Because right now I think we gave them time, a delay to allow the second quarter basketball.
Right. Well, because...
That's coming in the fall.
Yeah, that's coming in the fall.
They'll redo that.
I mean, but... So just, you know what I mean? It would be up to this board.
I see your hand, Tracy. Teresa, I see your hand.
It would, it'd be up for this board.
Let's get one more round though.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be up to this board and the members of the board, whether they consider a Jersey barrier, you know, doing the same job as a wooden rail, you know what I mean, and from, from the maintenance and standpoint. I mean, I went to Belling Millbury's McDonald, Dunkin' Donuts and they had Jersey barriers through that, you know what I mean? So I deal with the school where they've got the wooden post, guardrail, and it breaks all the time and.
They got 10495, they got 100. I mean, that's what it is. But I have a question though. Should we not have a pulse of this board before this applicant, whether it's a full thing or if it's minor modification, it's just before the board, how to public area, that if we suggest, and I'm, I'm okay with it, you could cut the sense of what, should we have a pulse of this board before they go through this process? And if you all are like, no, 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 we won't accept it, waiters on the drawing, then they're just gonna have to do it.
I don't know if we can really.
You can give an opinion.
It's a pulse.
We can just, yeah, open discussion on it, I believe.
Right, that's what I mean. It's not a vote.
Yeah, not, not a phone. I don't care either way.
I'm not opposed.
I have a question. First of all, you said this, this, this part of the process is in no way holding them up as far as opening, right?
That's my understanding, but I could be wrong. And that's what I was told today. I have not spoken to the applicant. I spoke to Ken Frazier today and that's the last.
The fence has gone up, you said.
It's already.
The chain link fence is up.
The chain link fence is up. I have no problem with the Jersey barriers. They look good. I saw them. I've been by there several times. I have, I do not have a problem with the Jersey barriers staying there as long as the fence is up. Posting guardrail or Jersey barrier, one or the other. One's up, if they want to leave it in, I don't have a problem with that. I don't want anything, I don't want Ken to hold, hold them up as far as opening if he feels this is a big issue, because it's not to me.
It's, they, they have until September to do it.
Okay, well, that's, that's coming.
No, which is next, wait, I don't know, it doesn't have a date in September. I, I, I think that the, the, the building commissioner, I believe, would like to, I'll have him write a letter if they do decide to go forward. I think he did have an issue with the, with the guardrail versus the Jersey barrier. I don't know what it is and I don't want to speak for him, but he would like to.
Right, if he could prove one is stronger than the other.
He would like, he would like to tell you all what, what the difference is and I will make sure that he does. If, if the applicant moves forward, I'll make sure that he has a letter attached to your packet so you can take this.
Teresa, here and that, anything to add or question?
Yeah, I have a few things to add. Number one, let's clarify that it's not, I not want to put that fence in, but I don't want to put that fence in. That's not the issue here, okay? That's how it's going on. Okay. The issue with the fence is, first off, we have a six.
Guardrail?
Guardrail. The six-foot chain link goes from end to end, from the back, the right corner lot, all the way across the back, all the way around the side, all the way down past the propane tanks. The majority of that six-foot fence is on level land. It has no, you don't even need fall protection for most of where that fence is. The retaining wall from end to end is where all the Jersey barriers are, from the first drop off to where it completely levels off again on the other side. So the guardrail is literally overkill. That's number one. The guardrail is also something that you're asking me to do that is impossible to get done at this pace with COVID, with the money, with the delays and everything else that I've been through, and the fact that I have a propane line, 125-foot propane line coming across the parking lot. There is no room to fit a chain link fence and a guardrail, wood guardrail, between the burn where this propane line comes through on the left side. The Jersey barrier is completely covered from end to end. Now, try to find somebody to do the fence. I've asked six companies. I cannot find a company to do it. And if they do want to do it, when I tell you triple the cost, it's insane. You're asking me to do something that is so exhausting that isn't going to change the difference of what those Jersey barriers are doing right now. So if you're telling me I have to come back and ask you and get a modification, that's not a problem. But if you're telling me I have to do it the way I did the last time to open up a hearing, I opened up that hearing because there was, there was problems with my conditions and I had to get my conditions corrected. That's why I reopened the hearing. Has nothing to do with what I'm doing. This is a small modification to ask for, because you're asking me to do something that is literally not possible now, financially or time-wise, or even to fit where it has to fit. And you're asking me to do it in a place that's completely level land.
Okay, on that aspect, there's a set of prints, so it can be done. It's on the print. So either somebody messed up and put themselves together or whatever, but it's on the print, just so you know.
So, through the chair.
Right now, the way I look at it, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the Jersey barriers. I'm saying, we've been going around the circle for a long time.
So, so just through the chair, Jake, you know, I think Teresa can reach out to Eve regarding what Talman, you know, requires on a minor modification, if she desires to go down that path, you know what I mean, and then the board can decide at that point.
And in the meantime, the building inspector should make an analysis that one is stronger than the other, more effective than the other.
Or if he wants, if he wants an additional Jersey barrier, if that's the route that has decided, if he wants to close some gaps up.
If they're the same and they perform the same, there should be no reason, other than the fact that we want to be punitive because it's on the drawings, they should be able to use the Jersey barriers. That's in my opinion. You know, we're here for our business and to have, make sure that people are safe and if it works and it's effective, I think we should go on that to.
Yep, I think we gotta go forward.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. If she wants to make the modification, she would communicate with Eve. You know, go from there.
Yeah, that's it.
I'm okay with that.
Without opening a whole nother hearing.
Yeah, we haven't done that with other. She's gonna check on that.
Eve, you're gonna check on it.
I'm gonna find out from town council what the appropriate way to do it is. Do you have a card? Teresa, do you have a card that you can, if you give me a card, I will find out from town council what the process is and let you know and then you can.
She's in the system.
You have only a permission. Okay.
Okay. Excellent.
It'd be like changing out some trees or something, you know, similar.
Okay, so gentlemen, besides that. That means that now that we're here for, that we're gonna do something to continue on because the fence is not feasible and we're gonna check in to see how we're gonna get that modification and everything, that I need a continuance.
It's a discussion.
Well, it's not a continuance.
It's not a continuance, it's just a discussion.
Well, I need to be here in good faith and I would have everything done in September, but apparently I can't get it done in September. The same thing with the final coat, because the condition on the final coat was, because I was gonna be open and I was gonna have a lot of traction to see what was gonna be the problem, but as you know, I'm not open.
So I, through the chair to Jake, I would probably be placed on the September 9th agenda. So you can raise those other items there and we'll discuss it at that. Or.
Possibly. Your patterns, what town council comes up with, how.
I'm sorry, I missed, what do you need to, what, what's the, what's the?
She'd like to be on the September 9th.
I know, but for what?
The final coat of the asphalt.
So you want an extension from the building commissioner on the final coat of asphalt?
His board.
Board. The board.
Yeah, the board. We, we make that decision, not the building inspector.
Okay.
We, we extended it to September. She's looking for an extension beyond that.
That's fine.
That's all. We've done that with other businesses.
It was the asphalt and.
Asphalt and, as you, you gentlemen discussed.
The guardrail.
No, I'm, we're beyond that.
Yeah. That's it?
Yeah.
That was it.
Asphalt, because it just needs a top coat. That's all.
We'd have to officially vote on, on the Jersey barriers.
Correct. That's what the next meeting is, we get a modification.
Sorry, I, I, I'm sorry, I have one more question. I've not come across these kinds of things before. So the final coat of asphalt, the planning board allowed them to, allowed them to.
Put a binder. Put down the binder and open up.
Okay, and so, so what is the, what is holding up the final coat of asphalt? Is the guardrail versus Jersey barrier?
No, the asphalt's the parking lot.
Right, okay.
And there's a base coat and then there's a top coat that's applied. You put the base coat down first and then you put a top coat on. And that, that's the final phase of that.
Okay, so I guess my question is then.
She's looking for an extension on the base, on the top coat.
Right. Why?
Normally you do it in cooler weather, because in the summertime, the traffic will tear it up.
Correct.
So most asphalt was done in spring or fall.
Right, I know, because I drive on the.
That's why.
Construction, it drives me crazy.
A lot of times we'll allow an extension on that to allow it to be done in cooler weather, instead of the heat of the summer.
So there.
Because of the heavy traffic.
Is that why, so September, why, is that why it can't be done September? Because it's gonna be still too hot?
Well, we don't know. So they might be asking.
She wants a discussion, discussion though.
Okay, so you want a discussion on, for another reason, not because of the Jersey barrier or anything like that?
And I, I was out there for two things. I was out there for.
Twelve things.
I know.
Jersey barriers and then extension up by the coal pipe.
I, I'm sorry, okay, I'll try to figure this out. So you want to get back on for, so there's a reason, there's a different reason why you can't finish the asphalt coat before September.
I'm just, if we're gonna move forward on the 9th, the Jersey barrier reaches.
Right, I'm trying to figure out whether or not they're related. Can you not do the coat of asphalt because that, the Jersey barrier hasn't been worked out?
Put it on the top for September.
Okay, I will. I'm just trying to get my head around why. I've, I've never had to, this is not my strength. Sorry.
No, no, no. So Jake, through the chair. Teresa, are you, just so for our awareness, are you looking to move the, the top coat out to November, October? You're shifting it out, okay, that's.
November.
Okay, okay.
We need to know because.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so what's.
Just so we know.
Is why?
Various issues.
Okay.
We can get snow in November, so.
Well, yeah, we can get snow in, we can get snow in July. I think Texas got snow.
On this, we'll worry about that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse anybody. I'm just trying to write down what I.
Hundred percent.
So we'll have a good discussion for then the next meeting.
Yep.
I would check, whoever you're, whoever you're contracting with, I would check, because sometimes the asphalt plants close.
Right.
Yeah, they close into summer.
Okay, make sure you know that. So, yeah. Okay, so, they close different nights, but it went to something, they usually shut down for maintenance.
And that also depends on the weather.
Yeah, it depends on the weather too.
So she technically hasn't run out of time on the asphalt. She's just asking.
So September 9th?
Right, I, I know.
So you'll communicate?
No, no, that's why I wanted to.
You'll, you'll communicate and you'll get on the agenda and hash it out.
The guardrail is not near the asphalt.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna.
Independent.
Eve, are you going to reach out to Teresa first, just to make sure it's on the agenda, or does she need to come in and request to be on the agenda?
I will, so I am in, on Tuesdays. On Tuesday, I will try to find out from town council what the process is for you to move forward with the Jersey barrier. If you'd like to be on, if the issues are, this is what I was trying to figure out. If the issue of the top coat is unrelated to the Jersey barrier, then you can be on the agenda on the 9th for the top coat and then potentially for the Jersey barrier unless we have to do a different process.
The Jersey barrier should be fine for the 9th, honey, but I came before you just on the discussion.
Why can't we, why can't we talk about the top coat tonight?
Through the chair. Until we find out from town council, what's going on.
No, no, that's.
We ain't gonna, we ain't gonna make no decisions.
No, 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 no. The, the Jersey barrier is a separate thing, that's.
Because it's a change of plans.
But the top coat, the top coat extension is what she's also here for tonight. So why couldn't we discuss that tonight? Is what I'm asking, so we could. So that way they were not, we're addressing.
Now my head's exploding.
Teresa, you're asking.
Is there a certain date, Teresa, that you're, you have in mind or?
November 1, October 30, you know, whatever.
Horseshoe will squeeze me in in November. I'll tell you in November, Horseshoe will tell me when he can be here because he'll find a date and Horseshoe will get done. If I tell him it has to be done in November, he'll be there in November.
Well, give us a date. I think that would be helpful.
No later than the last, last day.
Well, so we had September 30.
Hold on, Les. No later than what, Teresa?
November's, November's close enough, yeah.
November 1, right?
Well, I mean, you gotta, you gotta book it with the, with the asphalt company. You can't say, she can't say tonight what the date's gonna be unless she knows.
But, yeah, it would have been simple.
End of November, end of November.
By the end of November?
It's simple. You call them up before you come here, you say, I'd like to pave my driveway and sometime in the fall, can you give me a date? And they'll give a date, so you come in and you say, listen, I have a date for September 12.
But she did say that she can just call them and they'll come at any point.
I have a relationship with Horseshoe and he said that when I tell him what I need done, he will do what he can to squeeze me in.
So, why can't we handle that tonight?
Yeah, so we're gonna want, wanna work on that.
So we, we talked to her prior.
They're all behind schedule because of weather.
September 30th. September 30th is, I think, what we gave her too. So she wants to move it back to November 30th.
Okay.
Any concerns with the board?
I have no concern with that.
Okay.
I don't either.
Mike, you, you care about moving out two months?
Whatever, yes, sir. You know my opinion.
I, I don't have a concern with moving out two months. It, it's, everybody's behind.
Yeah.
July wiped out a lot of people's plans.
It's not a motion, is it?
All the asphalt companies are way behind because of the rain that we've been having and everything.
Why was it washing?
I think we would just need a motion, just as a, as a record.
495 and driveways.
You want to make the motion, Les?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to grant the extension on the asphalt from September 30th to November 30th due to the COVID and the weather conditions.
Okay, motion made by Les, second one by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those opposed?
Opposed?
Or, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, I'm staying. Okay. Want I'm staying?
All right, that's done. Are you doing a roll call? Is the, next step is the Jersey barriers.
Next step is, I'm going to talk to town council and figure out what they, they have to take.
And the asphalt.
Or if it's a different process, you can decide whether you want to do it or not. I will reach out to you after I talk to town council. The top coat's taken care of, now we're just discussing the Jersey barriers.
That's it.
Very good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
We at 7:30 yet?
7:30.
Oh, we're past 7:30. Jude's still on.
Thank you, James.
Yep, thank you.
Night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Okay. Next item on the original, John, the 743, so 7:30, public hearing continued. Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for special permit and definitive subdivision residential compound, Hawk Hill Farms, 768, 772 Northwest Main Street. They have requested a continuance to September 23rd, 2021. The applicant and the applicant's engineers on the line, would you like to say anything before we motion to continue?
Tris?
Come on.
Not, unless you guys have questions, but me, we're just still taking a little bit of time to get all the stuff right. And the applicant is not available the first meeting in September, so in order for us to get to the peer, get the plans done and the peer review, get everything in order for you guys so that we can, you know, make some decisions at the next meeting, we're asking for continuance to September 23rd.
Okay.
I have one, one question coming up on this.
Yep.
Has it been looked at where the driveway meets Northwest Main? Because over this last rain, and you've been out during it, half that driveway was in Northwest going across the street. All the asphalt, ground asphalt and everything, that driveway. Granted, we've had some rain. But you're planning on doing a lot of work, adding more traffic, the whole nine yards. Are you gonna be having a reverse well there to try to keep that water on your side of the street? Or what's gonna be the deal there?
Yep, I was out there during the last heavy storm and saw almost every driveway on Northwest Main Street washed out. And I, I paid particular attention to ours. Yes, there's water coming off. It is clean, it's not eroding like the other ones are.
Right.
But to answer your question, we are planning on tipping that road, so only about 20 feet of that driveway coming in is gonna come out on the Northwest Main Street. Everything else is gonna get super elevated and come across and go into that culvert that's on our side of the road and then it will go under Northwest Main Street.
Awesome. All right, I appreciate it. I'm glad you went out there. I mean, you can really see it. I mean, the dirt roads, I understand. I mean, they really wash out there, but that driveway, those two, it's not as bad, but it's all the way across the road.
We'll do what we can to, to help in COVID. I talked to the owner across the street. He told, he told me what, how he handles the water coming on his, into his driveway.
They have a form and everything, they've built it, trying to stop it from flooding the yard.
Yeah, yeah, I spoke with him. And like I said, I've been out a few years, especially that one last Wednesday, was it?
Yeah.
We got quite a bit of rain.
With earning.
Okay, no, appreciate that.
W W E.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So they did request a continuance. We have a letter. I don't know if you guys have a letter in our pocket. I think I should just read it at the next meeting, next year.
Yeah, I mean, you can just continue it to a date.
Yeah. And then, did you have something to submit? Name and address?
My name is Travis.
Quick, quick.
Yeah, I own a parcel, the four unique, is it a landlocked by end of property?
Uh huh.
And I was just concerned about a, a possible easement, wonder if that's being considered.
Okay, do you have something to submit to the board?
Well, I have a map, just to kind of give you an idea of where I'm, where I am in retrospect to their.
Okay, okay. The applicant requested a continuance to September 23rd, so do you, would you be able to come then? And also, if you could submit the map before our meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then.
Jude, that was brought up at last meeting by.
Yeah.
Has that been looked at at all?
But, no, well, at this, Mike, because they're asking for a continuance, we shouldn't be discussing anything until they come in for the meeting.
Well, one of those deals where, just has it been relayed from the last meeting?
Yeah, reiterating, yeah, that has to be addressed.
We can add it to the file tonight with them submitting the map.
I'll get one to know.
Okay.
We, we have one, one of the landlocked parcel that we were looking at that was requested a while ago. I don't know if this is the same gentleman, but if he could get that information to the board as soon as possible so that we can address it, because we hope to get all this stuff finalized very, very soon, so.
And that's why I brought it up through the board. I just wanted to make sure it was mentioned before.
It was mentioned before, yeah.
Being mentioned again.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair.
You want to submit them?
So, yeah, we would ask that they would submit it now and that way we can expedite this.
Yeah, we also have a letter that we can read at the next meeting.
Excellent.
Just give it to Jen and Cheryl and put it in the packet the next time.
And go, you have this letter also.
But Jen will, Jen will put it in the packet for sure.
You got it.
Well, it just takes a motion to continue if anybody wants to do that.
I know what it's all about, so if you want to.
Calm down. I'm making a motion to extend the public hearing for Hawk Hill Farm, Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, 768, 772 Northwest Main, to September 23rd, 2021, at.
7:30?
7:15.
7:15.
We have something at 7:15. So 7:30?
7:30 PM.
I'll second that.
What's 7:15?
Continuing in Hawk Hill? Oh, no, that, sorry, 7:15.
7:15 on that motion.
Yep.
Can I second that?
There you go.
Motion made and seconded in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jude. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jude.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We'll see you on the 23rd.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, probably moving right along here tonight.
Yeah.
Right.
So, number six, under additional business bylaw changes for fall town meeting?
Yeah, it's in here somewhere.
Okay, so this issue is that you had a conversation in June about a couple of items that Les wanted the board to forward for town meeting. The problem was, it wasn't actually on the agenda.
Right.
At the meeting we had the conversation on. So I asked Les to come back again so that we can put it on the agenda. You can have the conversation again briefly if you'd like to. And then, Les, you need to.
Go before the selectmen.
For the selectmen on Tuesday, and I, or next, a week from Tuesday.
Yep.
I've already told them to pencil you in, but they need the information, Lisa needs the information by next Thursday.
Okay.
And then you have to go on Tuesday.
So, this was pretty cut and dry. You know, I think we talked about, there's only one, two, three articles. We talked about five articles. One was to amend the zoning, the frontage issue, because that's what was happening on Caswell Court. Remember, it was offset. And then the other ones, the monuments. Those are the three articles we discussed that we wanted to move forward with. The selectmen have to do a quick discussion and review. Then it will come back to us to finalize, and it'll be on the town warrant. I talked to Eve. We've got plenty of runway to make the fall town warrant, to get something on there. I think we've missed the monuments for the last two town meetings, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought it was only one.
Two.
I thought we got the fall.
No, we.
Talking about the last fall.
Did we? All right.
November.
Yeah.
November 2020.
We wanna stay on track.
Now, Ian, I think, had looked at where we were at. Are you aware what we're talking about on these monuments?
Uh, a little bit.
So what we've been trying to do is, each time there's a town meeting.
You gotta make sure you know where.
There's a lot of old, old projects in the town.
Yeah.
That never had monuments put in.
Yes, that I do know.
So what we're trying to do is clean up those old projects and get the monuments in. So each meeting, we're trying to allocate so much money at town meeting, and it goes out to bid, and we're trying to get them all done. So.
Yeah, Bill Kanduf had it.
I don't know. Yeah, you can find the list of where it's all at.
I'm sure it exists.
Right.
A lot of lists.
A lot of lists, so.
There's a lot. I mean, this isn't gonna happen in a couple of years. It's gonna take a while because there's a.
Which is a long way.
Forever not being done.
Yep.
Um, and we'd like to try to continue on where we stopped at. And I don't know where we stopped.
I think Andrew's, I think Andrew's engineering did the last, won the last proposal. And I'm not sure where they placed.
Downs Road, weren't we?
Might've been Downs, down there.
I'm not sure. That's why it'd be good to know where we're at.
Yeah.
In that development, to see where all has to go.
Yeah, I care.
Because they need to know where they have to.
And just, just so Eve knows, this came forward to our board from a property owner down on Downs Road. And we took it and said, you know what?
Needs to be.
They're right, and it needs to be done, and we took it from that. That's it.
Yeah, this was like the 2013, everybody went bankrupt. We have no money to finish roads and.
Projects, and they walked away.
Anything, any plans.
So now, people come into these neighborhoods, and they have no marks to go off of for property laws.
Right.
Challenging.
So we're trying to make it where what's supposed to be, should've been done.
Right.
That's all. So I just wanna give you the background.
Totally fine.
So those, those are the articles. Pretty, pretty cut and dry. The one that will probably have a further, long, I don't know, next discussion is probably the accessory apartments, you know, and that renewal aspect of that. So, that's all.
I just needed to have it on the agenda so that you could talk about it.
We've covered it. We've covered all three.
And it is a.
Yeah, the, correct. It will be. For the selectmen, it will be, when it comes back to us, it'll be a public hearing. So, that's all. Good deal.
Okay, next item.
Do you need to vote again, since you didn't, since you voted on something?
Oh.
It's up to you guys. Recommend a recommendation to the.
Favorable recommendation to the selectmen.
Yeah.
For these, um, items proposed.
Uh, motion made. Is that a motion, Mike?
Sure.
Seconded by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks. Will you report back? Excuse me?
Yes, I'll copy you and Jen on it.
One moment, please. Are you?
Put me on the jet, I'll show up.
You wanna know about the door bylaws? You wanna add another one? You wanna add something? We skipped over you because you were late. You were tardy. You didn't come at 7 o'clock when our meeting started.
You said your comments.
Yeah. Truck downtown.
Thought they had a school bus.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One moment.
It was COVID.
One moment. Okay. Um, all right, so, boy, we're all set.
Yep.
That one?
Yep.
Okay. Well, go back to number four.
Oh, man.
That we reached at 7:11 tonight. McIntyre Loan 470 Northeast Main Street Phase Four, request for release of restoration bond. Do you have your bond amount that you're requesting to release approximately?
Asking to reduce the bond. I'm just asking to relinquish this part of the pit from that bond. I'm not asking for money back.
Okay.
You're looking for just a transfer of, like, the.
You're gonna hold the same bond amount?
Bond amount's not changing. These areas that are reclaimed, I just don't want them to be covered under that bond anymore.
Okay.
Not mistaken, I think that was brought up at the last meeting, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Then they said they had.
Instead of regretting it all, can we swap it from this part to this part?
We did that.
Yeah, but we need the, we needed the.
Right.
And that was for a new section of the earth. This is for the old section that was just for reclamation.
So your current bond has how many phases under it right now?
Uh, in the packet I gave you, there was a diagram that we put forward a couple years ago that I think is six phases.
And name and address for the records.
John Palmer McIntyre, representing McIntyre.
Thank you.
Dan McIntyre here.
Hi, thank you. Okay, so if four is coming out, how many phases do we have?
Uh, yeah, this is for.
Okay, yep.
So it's powerful, right there.
Okay.
Not that one.
Yep. Yeah.
That one shows.
Next one is your acreage.
Yeah, that's kind of an avenue.
Yep.
Doing, uh, that one shows.
Are these existing or?
So you will only have phase five and six under this current bond?
Phase one.
Okay.
Five and six under the current bond, plus the new area that we discussed.
Yeah. And we're removing this one.
Throwin' photos that you guys can pass around.
Is that area that we're discussing? On this, approximately 20.2 acres. I'm sorry. Will that be a lot? 20.2?
Uh, yeah, so the 20.2 is.
You're going from this down to this?
Correct.
That's what you plan to do?
Yeah.
So they're going from 28.3 to 20.2?
28.3.
Has already been reclaimed.
So we're going from 48 to 49 instead of 20.2.
Okay, all right.
Um, board, do we want to have someone go out there?
So, and that's, I intend to hold email for you here, and I know it's very difficult. She's been, not working full-time, but, so, we set it up a few years ago that Bill would be the agent for the board. Obviously, he's not here anymore. So, we didn't know where to go, so that's why we're here. But I'd be certainly happy if somebody wants to be an agent for the board, or if we want, if you guys just want us to come back here. Either way, it's finally, I just need to know which way you want to do it. Those, there's pictures in the packet that I gave you, plus these are drone pictures of everything here. And there's one there for everybody.
Looks luscious.
Yeah.
It grows great. Incredible.
Oh, you sure this is in a field in Ireland? That's what she was thinking.
Back in time.
Sure as a shirt, but, um.
I said it.
Yeah, no.
You're not sure, man. But.
Yeah.
No.
But in those pictures they gave you, they're, they're laying out.
Yeah, I got them, okay.
Okay. Um, board, pleasure. So you wouldn't need a motion to release phase four out of the bond, the current bond, leaving five, six, and the new area that we just created? Just releasing, removing that out of the bond?
If phases one, two, and three were previously.
Yeah.
Yep, one, two, three, so.
So this is just phase four that we're discussing tonight. And five and six would remain, plus the new section.
What do we call the new section? Did we say seven? Or do we do A?
It might be like A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. Ernie, Ernie's got the motion?
I'll make that motion.
There's no reduction.
Okay. Motion made by Ernie to release the phase four out of the existing bond.
I'll second that.
Uh, seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
Put him in the.
Hi, you're all set. So.
Thank you.
Do you need something in writing from us on that? Do you need something in writing from us on that?
No, this is.
Yeah.
And then that reducing the bond.
So just for our file, that phase four is reclaimed, and it's not involved with the existing.
There's multiple updates for the file.
Yeah, looks pretty good.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay. You guys have anything else to tell us?
Thank you for coming back.
Okay. Oh, you're welcome. No problem. Okay, signing a couple things. Uh, time, Bedoin, Earth Remove, a special permit extension, an accessory apartment special permit extension, the 137 Martin Road. It's 8 o'clock, and.
Flying Goose?
Yep, Flying Goose, Public Hearing Continued, Flying Goose LLC, application for site plan review and special permit, 286 Webster Street. They've requested a continuance. It's in your folder to the next available planning board meeting, which is the night.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
There you go.
We got it open to public hearing?
Yes, we do.
So I'll make a motion for a continuance for the Flying Goose LLC at, for their special permit and site plan review for 286 Webster Street. To, then, uh, ninth of September, was it, the ninth of September?
Ninth, yep, September 9th.
7:30?
7:15.
7:15.
15? I thought we already did 15.
No, no, that was.
That was the second. 7:15.
Just in case, we've got something at 7, but just in case, we can.
Yep, I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. Um, and then we've got the two things to sign that I just said, and then another accessory apartment special permit extension for 21 Wall Street. Um, we have one ZBA special permit application to review.
ZBA.
I.
Which one's ZBA?
Do not have that. Uh, oh, wait, it's right here. Who would like to review this? Oh, Les.
Oh, that was a quick hand.
Well, I figured I missed the last meeting. I'll take the punishment.
Okay, yeah.
You know what I'm doing.
Um, vouchers, and let's try to do, um, meeting minutes for the half hour that we have. I've started to go through them.
Okay.
Thanks for the sign up.
So I'm at, yeah, we'll do the meeting minutes first. I'm at March 4th. Who actually prepared these meeting minutes?
Probably three people.
Was it a combination of a couple people?
Okay, they're not signed.
There are some corrections, yeah, that need to be made on March 9, 4.
Yeah, and then, um, we should have, um, the, what do they call her? The meeting minute taker?
Recorder.
Recorder, we need.
Recorder, meeting minute taker.
Do you know who, who did this?
Who did these?
Yeah.
She's lost, eh? Here's a meeting.
A Y E? That's A.
Ashley, bro. Oh, recording secretary. Okay, so that needs to be added, as long as she did the March 4th and the March 18th. Um, so March 4th, um, attendance, uh. Well, you gotta, uh, add vice chair, um, after my name or before my name. And then Ian was here, so he was a non-voting member. So typically, we had, um, Bill Kanduf as a non-voting member. So he should be listed on every single meeting that he was here.
And also for all these meetings, whoever's here.
Yeah, they, yeah, everyone in attendance representing the town should be on this, on the meeting minutes.
What about the corrections to March 4th?
The directions?
Corrections.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm going through them. Do you wanna go? And then I'll tell you if you missed.
Well, yeah, on page two.
Yep.
Second, first item there, I refer to Jackie, question mark, question mark, so.
Jackie Firsty, F-I-R-S-T-Y.
Firsty?
Firsty, and then Lori Hoult, right? That's her last name, H-O-U-T.
Yep.
H-O-U-T?
Yep, and then signing as Ashley as the recording secretary, L-E-E. Add her name on there. And I had a quick question, which I don't know if this is gonna open up a can of worms. Did we ever get, um, for the Niptys, like the stormwater stuff, did we ever get the email from Christopheri about the towns? Um, we didn't get something that what happens, what's the penalty if the town does not adopt?
Correct.
We didn't get the list of communities who adopted this in full.
Correct. No, we never did.
We need to do to maybe change ours.
Yeah.
Correct, no, we had nothing.
Discussion made where we were pretty good on a lot of it.
Yeah.
Well, we wanted the map changed, too.
We needed some tweaking.
Whatever happened with that?
We didn't want the map changed.
It was due June 12, June 30th, 2024.
Correct.
It was COVID.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was the one that.
Leaving on COVID.
That was the one he, the key came in and presented. He wanted to do the whole area.
But I feel like we had that presentation like.
We did, we did.
Four years ago.
Yeah. Well, yeah, this is the second time around, yeah.
So.
And they, nothing really.
And more compliance to most towns, a lot, a lot parts of it.
Well, we didn't wanna do this, uh, the stormwater management throughout the whole map of Douglas. We said, no, you can focus it on the downtown area.
Yeah, because for subdivisions, we already have the umbrella of the Massachusetts stormwater.
Yeah.
Management.
We didn't want, we didn't wanna.
Look back into and follow up.
Yeah, I think we should follow up.
Yeah.
Should we were going back to two meetings a month now?
Yes.
For a little bit.
To.
Not for November, December, January.
Yeah.
So we got three, two months. So, yeah, we need to figure out if we're doing anything with this guy Nick Christopheri for the MS four regulations. I don't believe he sent us anything from March fourth.
All right, I'm okay with this on this ZBA.
So do we want to make a motion to accept these as amended? These meeting minutes as amended? No, no, but you got to so move it.
For March.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. For the, to accept the meeting minutes as corrected for March fourth, twenty twenty-one.
As amended.
Second.
Seconded by, are any all those in favor?
No, no, I'll second it.
Seconded by Les, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, abstain?
I abstain.
Ernie abstains, okay.
You're out raising, you're officing.
Now, for the meeting minutes of the eighteenth.
Yes.
If I recall, I did the mullen.
Yeah, this is better.
It's not noted in there that I did the mullen.
No.
Well.
No, you did the mullen for the other one.
You're not going to be able to, you wouldn't know. On the next one.
Items that took place on the fourth.
You did the mullen on the fourth. You did the mullen for the fourth.
For the fourth, but it should be noted on the eighteenth stating that I did do it.
Oh.
I was at the meeting on the eighteenth.
It's just going to be recorded with the clerk.
But I don't know if we used to put that in before.
In order for voting.
That way, yeah, somebody says, well, how can you vote? I wasn't at that meeting. It's not on record.
Put it in, you can put it in. You said it at the meeting, right?
That's good.
Yeah, because it's always stated at the meeting when we do it.
Yeah.
We always let it be known at the next meeting that we're back, that hey.
But you can miss one.
Yeah, it should be in the minutes. It should be in the minutes.
It should be, it used to be, right?
It should be.
Excellent.
So when did you say it? What time did you say that? At the beginning of the meeting?
Normally, it's at the beginning of the meeting.
So you said at the beginning that you filed the. Filed the mullen. Okay, and then vice chair is missing off of my name. Again, Ian's, I believe Ian was here.
Yes.
At this one, so he needs to be noted that he was present, non-voting member.
Correct.
Non-voting agent.
Spelling.
For the board.
Because I believe he was mentioned in the minutes.
Ernie, did you do a mullen?
No.
No?
Oh, I called it on the fourth. I think I did.
Might have.
For the fourth?
Yeah, you might have. I think you said something wrong.
Um, do we have any corrections on this one, March eighteenth?
March eighteen.
You look good to me.
That's good.
I didn't say anything.
Okay, other than adding Ashley's name as a recording secretary, me as vice chair, and Mike filed the mullen at the beginning, I'll sustain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one minutes.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Jake, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll just start. So again, vice chair, next to my name, Ian McElwee, M-C and capital E-L-W-E-E, so everywhere after Ian with the question marks. Under seven fifteen, public hearing continued. Three quarters of the way down the paragraph, adequacies is incorrectly spelt after three. Then again, page two, McElwee with a question mark, question mark. And then it's Mark Allen, A-L-L-E-N, and then Ian's last name again. I don't recall. They're saying that discussion took place regarding both concerns. Audio, the remote speaker was interrupted. I don't know if we want to add anything different to that. That was the preliminary subdivision plan. No?
I don't think so.
I mean, you could just leave it as it is.
Yeah.
And then next one, the A and R plan, Ian's last name.
Yep.
And. As far as I got. It's McElwee, M-C, and then capital E-L-W-E-E.
McAllen? Ian McAllen.
Elie. Additional business, cannot hear, presented to the board of site map, explain the, or is that? It's either Andy Leonard or it's Murray Bristol.
Andy Leonard.
Andy?
Andy.
Okay, so those ones, Andy Leonard. Pine, and then next one, cannot hear the remote audio, give the board an update. So that's Bob Pace?
I think it says she stated.
Oh.
Unless that part's wrong, too.
Yeah.
May have been his attorney.
Yes. Jen.
Jennifer.
Jen.
Galwitz.
Galwitz, out of Sutton.
Okay, you want to go with that?
Because it says she like a couple of the times, so it wasn't a typo.
Z Galwitz.
Can I just make a suggestion? Jen's writing all this down, but she will try to watch. We're not exactly sure who it was. We'll just try to watch that one section to make sure that we're.
Okay. Okay, yeah, sure.
A few pieces.
Anything else on this one? Oh, Ian's last name again. That's good that, you know, if we list him so that they know who's speaking on behalf of the board. And then another one. And then.
That's true.
Oh, sustain a motion?
What about, before you do, what about Mark? Mark what?
Allen.
Allen, she heard for that.
A-L-L-E-N.
Yeah. Good, everybody good? I'll make a motion to approve the April eighth meeting minutes as amended.
Motion made by Les.
Second.
Seconded by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
I was at the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, April.
To change a little bit, I'm reading through here.
Which one?
Twenty-second?
No, on Aprils.
April eighth?
Yeah, we're April eighth, yeah. Talking about doubling up on Marcus, did we try to double up? If you go on the last page.
Yep.
Last paragraph.
To double up? No, we talked about it.
Discussion took place, the Shackus said is we, they would double up their request.
And I think that we missed.
So we were going to double up and say why we were going to go double up.
We were going to double up because we wanted to put it on the spring, and we missed the spring town meeting.
All right, so are we going to double up in the fall?
We submitted as a single.
Well, we could have a friendly amendment to the recommendation for the monuments.
The only reason I'm saying it is, we did bring it up and we did talk about it.
Yeah.
We missed a couple.
We were nervous that the town wouldn't vote for the double the money.
We weren't sure, but it was explained why.
Twenty-five thousand.
It was explained that we've been ongoing with this, but during the COVID, we didn't do it because I'm not sure, so we're falling behind again.
Well, we could, it's on discussion, it's on additional business.
Yeah.
If you want to strike that twelve-five and change it to twenty-five grand.
What's the board's pleasure?
What do you guys, I mean, it was brought up back in April. And that's why I'm just bringing it up. I mean, if not, that's fine. I mean, anything's better than happening.
We just can't.
I don't have a problem. It's the poll of the board.
You could make an amendment on the floor.
What do you think, though?
I don't have a problem.
I think it's fine.
I'm fine with it.
I think it's fine. I know we did it before, but twenty-five's not going to break the bank.
Right, especially with the revenues coming in.
I mean, there's better than a construction boom, too.
There's new revenues.
There's new revenues.
Go for the double, but have an explanation why.
Yeah, just say that we missed it. It was due to COVID.
So I'm going to go before the selectmen, if you guys want to go with twenty-five, I'll go with the twenty-five. I'll amend the article as written.
Right.
Oh, with the twenty-five thousand.
Make a note.
And I'll make a notation.
Make a note in there that we discussed it back in April.
Correct, I have the explanation.
Yeah, I mean, take that and say that we discussed that.
I just don't want to jeopardize them saying no to twenty-five and not giving us anything.
Right.
They can always reduce it on the, on the floor.
Yeah, we can.
They can always cut it on the floor.
Doesn't always happen, though.
I know.
Yeah, I just want to, I'd like to make sure we still get the one at least anyway.
I agree.
Well, we can mention that, go again, that the twelve-five, and we talked about doubling it because they're trying to do catch-up. All these issues.
I'll get, I'll get the poll of the selectmen when I meet, when I meet for the selectmen, I'll get the poll of them if they.
Well, yeah, give an ultimate.
I'll ask.
So we want twenty-five to make up.
I'll ask for the twenty-five.
Through the planning board, I would think that we are fine either way, but we'd like to try to get the double up, to try to get caught up for the few meetings that were missed during the COVID.
So our kids don't inherit it?
And that way there, we stay on track with what's going on.
They clean up.
Along with the more cost it's going to entail to get more done.
I'm okay with it. You guys are all right?
I'm okay.
Yes.
All right, I'll do that. Not a problem. Thank you.
I just want to make sure we get to twelve.
Yeah, yeah, if everybody's like, oh, my gosh, we need twenty-five thousand foot concrete squares in the ground.
Yep.
Give you twelve.
Um, I don't know how many.
Right now, we won't know.
I think, yeah, I don't know.
Surveying and foundation markers are the.
I want to say.
I mean, it's the foundation.
Mike, don't hold me.
It was, yeah.
I believe they got sixteen to eighteen monuments in. I believe they. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mom.
Okay, that way back to the next meeting minutes?
Yep, on the twenty.
Oh, no, then.
April twenty-two.
Okay, so we're good with that.
Mm-hmm. April twenty-second.
April twenty-second.
Add vice chair, and then that's all I got. And then add Ian's name, because he was there. And his name is actually in here, so that's good, his full name. I don't know. Commander's Engineering. I'm not sure if that's correct.
It's still.
Commanders.
Commanders. Maybe I'll make that. Okay, so under Whitein Reservoir Estates, we need to change that to Andrews Engineering.
Wow. Oh, yeah, this was, um, I get this.
Look, I'm watching, uh, it's a calm thunder's eye.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is all good. Okay, all right.
Any questions?
No, I think it was pretty cut and dry. I recall the meeting.
Oh, entertain a motion.
Second.
All good.
Motion made by Les, seconded by Ernie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And.
You had an unexcused app.
Yeah, I know, like, and probably two demerits. Seriously, unexcused.
And so we can list.
Why is it not just absence?
Exactly.
Long story.
Influenced.
It's a long story. So if we could list Eve and Jen as non-voting people. However, we put Bill's non-voting member, I think they put.
Yes, non-voting member.
I think we're staff, agent.
Yeah, so non-voting staff or staff.
Why not just staff? Staff, no one would understand otherwise, it's fine. You're non-voting, you're staff, right?
Okay.
Yeah. You don't have to say that.
Unless you are unexcused.
And now we have a, now we have a new style.
Remember that.
Correct, we don't have to.
You didn't have your permission slip.
So for the record, I did submit my mullen for the July twenty-second meeting.
Nice, I like it.
At the following meeting, though.
Thank you. Noticed that it was a pretty light a meeting.
Yeah, oh, entertain a motion. Looks like everything's perfect, yeah.
It's because Jen wrote them.
Mm-hmm.
Did somebody make a motion?
Nope.
I will.
Okay, motion made by Ernie to accept the meeting minutes with the amendment to add the staff names at the top.
This only says draft.
Motion made. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike G, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you.
Abstain.
Leslie abstains?
You're unexcused.
Um, twenty-one still. Okay, so let's.
Okay.
Les, you can do your presentation for the ZBA, and I'll start passing.
Yep, yep, no problem. Uh, ZBA application, pretty cut and dry. The lot is a hundred by a hundred up on Walnut Terrace. There's an existing cottage. There's actually, they did a great job with the, Aaron, blueprints, blueprints and diagrams and layouts.
Scale?
Yeah, I don't have my ruler, but yeah, I think it's pretty fair.
You do, you're married to it.
So, yeah, what they're doing is removing the existing cottage and proposing another cottage or house in its place that would be more conforming to the lot. They'll never meet the frontage requirement of two hundred feet and the two acres. But the rest of it is an improvement and better, so.
Reed Road.
Slight, no, slightly, the footprint moves over because this one is like five feet off the property line right now. And that's why they're putting it more in the, and it is a bigger proposed house. But the ZBA board usually is, I think, comfortable sometimes with those.
They're moving it further off the side.
Yeah, off the side, the end of the back.
End of the back, they're moving it?
Yeah, it meets from the foundation, it, you know, it's meeting all the setbacks in the, in the footprint.
Unexcused, does it matter? Because, I mean, I know who the gentleman is, I spoke with him on the phone, I've done no work for him.
That's you.
It's up to you.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm fine.
So that's, that's the bottom line. So I don't have a problem, no objections here from my standpoint on their request.
Good.
I believe, are they requesting? They don't put this in here. Are they requesting a waiver or a special permit or variance?
Um, it would be on the application and.
Well, I'll check it then.
Should be checked on what you're going.
Well, it's usually in the.
Special permit.
Special permit, okay, all right, that's what it is. Yeah, sort of special permit.
Yeah, it should say in there some way, special.
Yeah, it just, it is buried. Buried what they were asking for. Yeah, special permit. Okay.
It's cool.
Oh, thanks. Thank you, thank you.
No vouchers.
I don't think any of this.
Um, we have six minutes. Do you have some, anything at this house?
I do not.
Okay.
Did you?
You have six minutes.
I have six minutes. I don't have anything to tell you. I'm not sure what you were expecting me to tell you. I don't have any updates.
Any updates regarding?
No.
No?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's going that way.
All right, so all is well.
We do.
Do you need to pack it back, I believe? You need to, sorry. Give that to you. Sorry, I needed one.
We are continuing to look for a, for a plan.
Okay, excellent.
We had interviews.
Things are ongoing.
I have not heard anything from that project as to where we are.
Well, interviews are step forward.
What about the minute taker?
Minute taker, I am interviewing someone next Wednesday, and hopefully some more applications will come in in the meantime.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you for calling.
It's a great job.
No problem.
You know that, yeah, on the emails or whatever, I never get it.
Did we miss?
Yeah, no, that's coming. Missed the Minarics in the audience still. He's the eight-thirty.
We're missing minutes from June, too. There is a.
Oh, we did. Yeah, we're missing June. Okay.
Until they hire a new minute taker.
Yep.
Too much to do for me to do that.
All hundred percent. Oh, 100%.
Well, I've listened to that meeting a couple times. I shouldn't have taken notes in meetings. I've now heard the entire meeting.
Memorized.
Okay. Alright.
Nice new books.
Yeah.
Nice teal.
Alright, someone want one again, right?
I think this might be.
Uh, no, number seven?
Number seven, Tracy?
Have we done that?
We didn't do that yet, did we?
Yeah, it's going around.
Oh, okay, that's what's being said.
We already voted on it.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
Uh, you heard for Bella Woods? We've already, um, voted to extend it, yeah. I hope you didn't travel too far. Okay, do you have anything? Do you have, just. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So did it go to the date I asked?
Yes.
Yeah, you do have.
A year to the, who signed it.
Yeah, um, what is, what do you have there?
September 25th.
Yeah, yep. Yes, no problem.
Excellent.
I do not have a telephone number. I did try to think about contacting you because the public hearings were, uh, continued,
so I knew it was gonna be early, but I didn't have contact information for you.
No worries. So, so that's why you came later, but that's fine.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
This was from, meeting.
Yeah, so anything FYI coming in as an extension? So the tolling period applies to all permits.
Yeah, man.
So, um, I think if we are reaching out to Town Council, we should reach out to them to confirm, um, anyone, like especially in this fall time, all those days for the state emergency. And I pass it around to a couple people here, like before you guys, here, um, needs to be added to the end date of their permit, and it's automatic. So I don't want people to, like a couple accessory apartments to, for saying that they were expired or not.
Okay, I'll make sure I get a list from Maria.
I mean, the list is probably pretty, anybody that was expiring during this year, most likely doesn't expire till next week, till like 200 something days.
Alright.
It only is important when people are trying to close or people are getting fined or something like that.
I'm just abstaining.
They had on my screen, will you? Did I cross over?
Just to get you like.
Why is this in our packet? Cozying up to you.
That's for you.
I know, it happened. Is this the, the latest one?
No.
Two, no, there.
With updates.
1114, 2020. If you open it up, there's the dates amended.
You told you didn't check, buddy. You gotta check the box.
Okay, so it's recently been amended.
We got a minute or two? Yes, we have a minute.
Just one minute.
Um, just when we're signing some of these documents, um, for all of us to be able to sign, can we stay in our swim lanes? I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody, but someone likes to put a big A and a big S?
You know what? I have to sign so many documents. I'm sorry. Stay in our swim lane.
Okay, almost done. Eight-thirty PM, public hearing. Oh, I'll read the notice. Uh, it is eight-thirty. Planning Board of the Town of Douglas will hold a public hearing to discuss proposed amendments to the town zoning bylaws. The public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 26th, 2021, at eight-thirty PM in the resource room within the municipal center at 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. The subject matter of the proposed amendments is indicated below. To see if the town will vote to amend Appendix A, Schedule of Use Regulations Table Subsection C, Commercial, in the town zoning bylaws as follows. The chart is attached. A copy of the proposed amendment is available for viewing in the Community Development Department during regular business hours within the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at time and place designated. Tracy Sharkey, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board. So, Board, we have this in our packet. It was the restaurant.
Yep.
Uh, we have the proposed zoning amendment for restaurants. Uh, we have the Board of Selectment meeting, August, meeting minutes, August 3rd, 2021. And.
Who's presenting?
I see Bob in the audience. Would we like to have like a one-minute introduction? Cause we've already gone over this.
Yeah, basically, you've already discussed this to the selectmen, selectmen then sent it back to you for the public hearing. This is the public hearing.
Okay.
Once you close this, send it back to the selectmen to process.